The November 9, 2028 City Council, the call order, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence? By pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Spies will be joining us on the phone. He is not on the way. We will proceed. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the October 26 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from October 26, 2020.
Second.
It has been moved to second to approve the minutes since October 26 meeting. Would the clerk please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be approval of the statement of the bills paid in amount of $167,099.14. Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we approve the statement of bills for $167,099.14.
Second.
Mr. Malott seconded.
Oh, he did. I'm sorry. I didn't hear him.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved to second to approve the statement of bills paid. Would the clerk please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steitz? Mr. Steitz?
Yes.
You have a yes.
Okay. At this point, we are going to put this other item on the agenda first, and I would like to introduce Deputy Founder Chief Ben Morrow and also from Providence Medical Center, Emergency Medical Service Liaison Gary Boswell. Would you, gentlemen, please?
Very.
Okay.
Again, my name is Jerry Boswell. I'm the Emergency Medical Services Liaison for Providence Medical Center in St. John's Hospital. And on behalf of our hospitals, we're thankful to allow us to participate with you tonight. Brave, dedicated, willing, and reliable. These are the words that describe emergency providers. They demonstrate these qualities every day by coming to the aid of others in their time of most need. However, each year, due to circumstances, an extraordinary effort, certain individuals amongst us shine. We are here this evening to recognize such an extraordinary effort shown on Wednesday, September 30, 2020, when first responders from your departments, Police Department and Fire Department, responded to a reported unconscious patient. Police officers Hart and Gould arrived to find a young adult pulseless and not breathing. They began CPR. Shortly after that, Fire Department personnel Walker, Robinson, Hubble, Renar arrived and assisted with delivering advanced life support. Eight minutes later, they succeeded in restoring a pulse and through their efforts of providing additional care during transport, arrived at Providence Medical Center with the patient. Within one week later, the patient recovered and walked out of the hospital. With that, on behalf of the Providence Medical Center, we have a program, You Made a Difference. And we'd like to recognize those individuals, and I'm honored to present to them a certificate and we have a challenge coin. And on the back of that challenge coin, it states, Your commitment to making, Your commitment to service makes a difference.
The first responders of our police and fire departments typically go about their jobs without fanfare, and I would surmise that they prefer it that way. Many times, their encounters result in meaningful but small shifts in the outcome of those they serve. Sometimes their efforts reward those they serve with substantially better outcomes than if no intervention had occurred. On September 30, the quick thinking and action of these police officers and firefighters resulted in just that. Studies vary, but in my 20-plus years of experience, the rate at which a patient found in cardiac arrest walking out of the hospital later is exceedingly rare, so rare that I can remember the details of each one that I've been a part of. These personnel, Master Police Officer Hart, Officer Gould, Fire Captains Walker and Rayner, Driver Operator Robinson, and Firefighter Hubble, who could not attend, tonight took swift action to perform lifesaving measures for someone who, prior to their arrival, was clinically deceased. Their dedication to training, as well as their professional and calm demeanor, ensured an efficient and rigorous effort to revive the patient resulted in that patient later walking out of the hospital under their own power. These first responders have been awarded a lifesaving medal for their actions, accompanying certificate reading in part. While working as part of an emergency response crew protecting the citizens and visitors of Edwardsville, Kansas, in the afternoon hours of September 30, 2020, on alarm 20-555, you went above and beyond the normal call of duty while responding with your coworkers to a medical alarm for an unconscious party. Upon your arrival, the victim was found to be in cardiac arrest. Your quick action to initiate lifesaving measures were crucial to this victim's recovery. Your professional manner, quick action, and teamwork saved the life of this person. This reflects immensely upon your character and the agencies that you represent. Mayor McTaggart, Mr. Boswell now presents you certificates, medals, and coins in recognition of your hard work.
Do I have to go that way or this one? There is no specific order to which I'm going to read these. I'm going to put them out like they came to me here on the front. Yes. The first one would be Captain Nick Walker. And last but not least, he wanted me to wait till tomorrow, and I said, no, you're going to get him tonight. Ben Morrow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. In all my years of service here as mayor, I have never had the privilege of handing out awards like that before. It was a big honor for me. Thank you very much for not only our police and fire department, but all the citizens and members of the city council.
And I do know that Chief Wyndham is quite proud of his officers as well as Chief Veece. Unfortunately, Chief Wyndham had a family emergency one night and joined us.
I understand how tough that is in this day and age because we see you off as a policeman or any, you know. As long as you have the right equipment, the training, you know, over the years, the training has evolved. Different way now, still tough. And for Michael Hart, that's twice in the last 14 months.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah. I remember that.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay. Next item on the agenda will be request or comments from the public. If there being none, we'll move on to the next item, and that will be consider authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with KC Disposal related to the 2021 City Solid Waste Manage and Recycling Agreement.
And Mr. Daniel is going to handle actually both of these two items.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I want to pass out some material that was provided today because there was some questions last time about different rates for roll-off containers. This isn't technically part of the proposed contract, but it was, the question was raised for those individuals who currently have those roll-off service, what that would be. So I'm providing that, and then after tonight, I'll get that out on our website. What I'm presenting tonight is asking for authorization from the city manager to enter into contract with KC Disposal for the 2021 City Solid Waste and Recycling Agreement. At our last meeting, we got authorization to essentially formally proceed with negotiations of good faith with KC Disposal. Not a whole lot has changed between now and then. What we're presenting is essentially a one-for-one service swap between current service levels of waste management and then signing on with KC Disposal starting in January of 2021. Weekly trash pickup in a 95-gallon container, weekly recycling pickup in a 65-gallon container, continuation of the annual citywide cleanup event that we can hopefully hold in the spring, and then the addition of an annual curbside event similar to what we're going to be doing at the end of this week, a curbside bolt-dead pickup event in addition to the citywide cleanup event. We scratched over to see that we could fit that in within the rate structure that has currently been proposed. So what's currently in the contract assumes that the mobile home park will not be joining the contract. There's a call scheduled with them this week, and that could change. That doesn't really change the asking to enter into the contract piece and getting that authorization from this body. What that would ultimately change is the rate that this body reviews as part of the annual ordinance, rate ordinance that we do at the last meeting of the year. So right now, if nothing were to, if we were to keep the same estimated house count, service would increase about less than 1%, 0.7% from 1812 per month to 1825 per month. There's a possibility that will shift a little bit, probably down some if the mobile home park is added, and we'll definitely know more about that by the end of this week. It will update you as soon as we get an update, and it will be, no rate change is going to be final until the annual rate ordinance that this body considers at the first meeting in December. The only change from the items and materials that were sent to you as part of the original agenda packet as it relates to the contract is under the insurance portion, which is on page six, excuse me, seven. It's end of page six, beginning of page seven. The excess and umbrella coverage right now is listed at $1 million per occurrence. The current agreement that we have in place with our current provider is $500,000 per occurrence, and that's going to be the base, that's going to be the minimum. So we're waiting on hearing back from KC Disposal of getting quotes related to that, but that may change from $1 million to $500,000 per occurrence at the final contract. But again, that's the current level that we have with our current service provider, and we, administration has reviewed it, and we're comfortable if we have to keep it at that level that it's currently been after the last five years. Again, we've tried to keep you updated through this process as we've reviewed, we've solicited bids and reviewed them as they've come in. We've solicited feedback from the residents who by and large are satisfied with the current level of service. So really, all we're going to be doing is changing from waste management to KC Disposal again with the addition of that curbside bolt-dead pickup event, the cost of which has already factored into the proposed rate structure that will be finalized in December. So there's no additional fees associated with that. If you have questions outside of that, I've been here to entertain those. We've also got representatives from KC Disposal here if you've got additional questions. If not, then the action before you is to operate the city manager and to enter into a contract with KC Disposal for this service.
I had a couple of questions, but they shouldn't be anything too crazy. The spring cleanup event, is that included in the cost or is that an additional cost to the city?
That's included in the, in our estimated cost. It's that we budget for, the adopted budget. So it's not really in the, it's in the service contract area. It's a matter of difference of line items, but it's already accounted for in our cost in this.
Okay.
So there is in the contract pricing, so just as we get today, the first two containers are basically at no cost, and they have a certain limit on the amount of trash that can be in those. And then for each additional container, there is a fee associated with that, which is what we have today. We pay for that out of the solid waste fund, and we include as part of our overall rate enough money to cover that, so, which happens today too.
Done.
That may pull things up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was wondering on page five, paragraph, I think it's five, well, A. It just says, it says $30, but then in parentheses, it says 45 per ton. I figured that was probably just a typo.
Yes, that should be $45.
And then I know this other one was a little bit, is probably just in all of the contracts, but it mentions if there's landslide, lightning, fire, storm, impending approach of storm or flood, that that would delay service. If they miss service for some extreme event, pandemics even in here, do we still owe them money for that month, or does that waive the fee for that?
What page are we on?
Page six.
All right. Force majeure. I don't know if you want to throw this in the air.
And I understand obviously if there's something crazy going on, they're not going to be able to make it. But I was just wondering, since it didn't specify if we would still be paying for that month of service or not, or if they would come the following day or the following week, if that was addressed somewhere in the contract.
I don't know. I mean, I mean, force majeure is, you know, is one of these things where they can't perform. They generally have to say, we can't perform because of force majeure. I don't know that there's any language that I recall that says whether they would be paid or not. If they don't provide service, you know, at all, I would assume there would be no payment for that period of time. Now, if it just, the storm comes in today and they're delayed two days, then no. And part of that is, is there's fees in there for failure of form, so they don't come pick up. But the reason they didn't come pick up is because, you know, the big storm came through town on Monday, and now they have to come on Tuesday or Wednesday, or maybe they're so overloaded, they get backed up, and they're four or five days behind.
Right. And I think as long as the service is performed, my concern is just, and it's not, again, it's not the end of the world, but I just thought, well, if it puts off trash for a month or something like that, then would our folks still be responsible to pay for that month of service? So I don't know if that's something that, if it's just kind of reading too far into the weeds or...
Well, this usually has to do with when parties can say you breached, and therefore I'm going to terminate the contract. And so this allows that there are circumstances beyond everybody's control. So we won't say you breached the contract because you didn't show up on Tuesday because there was a tornado on Monday.
Right. I completely understand that.
So usually doesn't, isn't tied necessarily to paying them unless you want to put that in the contract. I think there's usually a reasonable disrequirement, and then just working through it.
Right.
Because we don't know the duration either of what happens.
Right. So it's hard to know. Yeah. So you don't feel like it would be necessary to, to...
I, you know, I think it's hard to try to anticipate all of the different things that could happen with all of the different durations, and what the expectations would be given the event of what would be reasonable, and then how would we do the payment? And I think there's usually just kind of a good fake basis of working through that.
Well, it's a contract legal question, so you'd be the one to go.
You can add like four pages.
Right. Yeah. And again, like I said, I didn't want to get too into the weeds. I just thought, well, I wonder how that would work if they don't show up, or they don't show up for two weeks or three weeks, and hopefully that will never happen. I had my other question Zach, you already answered, and that was just about if the rate might go down if the mobile home community adds, so that's all.
And we'll know more about that as we talk with them, and we've got proposed rate structures to them. And again, as mentioned before, they're kind of in between management over there, so I think that's a part of the delay in getting them to review this. But depending on how that checks out, it would affect the rate that's, again, is a different act of this body being taking this several.
You know, just a note on the mobile home park, because it is kind of a, it is a little bit of an interesting scenario. So in this community, to the best of my knowledge, they have always handled their own garbage by separate contract, like a commercial customer would do. Technically, they are a residential customer, right, because they picked up individually houses, and so we've always left that as not included in a contract. I mean, I guess if we wanted to push that, we, that's a possibility, say, well, no, you're a residential customer. Part of the problem is there's not an easy way to bill, right? Just like we do on their sewer, we don't bill individual units, we bill the park as a whole, and so we treat them currently like a commercial customer versus a residential customer. Now, their rate is based on X number of units at a price point, and then we build them. Under garbage, we would probably do the same thing. We would say you got X number of units, the cost is 1825 a unit, you know, here's the charge. And I assume that's how today they're, you know, the company, Waste Management, I think is their current provider, comes in and says, there's this many units, this is the price per unit, we're sending one bill to the mobile home park. Versus a true commercial customer that has, you know, as you might see in apartment buildings or some mobile home parks where they have literally commercial front-load containers, you take your trash out to that, right? You don't have a garbage container. There are a little bit of an oddity in that sense that they're private as a community in the sense the streets are private, et cetera, but they are like a residential union. So long story, just to say, we've never really taken the position that it's a residential customer for the purposes of garbage.
Sure. Well, and I think, I mean, the same as commercial, I'm not on the, I'm not suggesting we ever say you're forced to use this service. However, since they are residents of our community, if they would benefit by the service for their price, then I think it's well worth reaching out to them and seeing if they would be a part of it.
And that is the intent, right?
And we made that out.
Put some history to that, or again, I don't know when or how that started, may have always been that way. It's been that way all my time here, and we have a couple people that serve on the council, been here many, many, many years, that probably have seen it being done that way for a long time. Just, again, just more for reference.
What percentage more is our current provider, current provider's bid for next year? Remember?
You must never get, I... Yeah. I mean, I have, I could give you an exact figure and provide other group, but if I were involved, it was in excess of 12 to 15%.
Okay. That's kind of the range I thought it was, and I just, I think it's notable that this is, this is, number one, it's a local company, and number two is that we are saving money over what we would if we maintained our current provider.
Yeah. Their, the base rates were comparable, but the recycling rates were really the biggest spread in all the bids, right? And the current provider took a pretty aggressive pricing on that, aggressive in the wrong way, right? They put a lot of cost into the recycling, you know, obviously, there's lots of recycling discussions out there, but at the end of the day, it was a total price to the homeowner. And so they, I think they were in excess of, in excess of $20 of cost to us, remember the cost of us and then mine and that's the question. So it would have taken several dollar increase to stay per home per month.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to enter into contract with KC Disposal related to the 2021 City Solid Waste and Recycling Agreement.
Second.
And Mayor, before we go further, just make sure that Mr. Stein sends any questions or comments. Mr. Stein, do you have any questions or comments you'd like me to relay?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. It has been moved to second to approve the authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with KC Disposal related to 2021 City Solid Waste and Recycle Agreement. Would the clerk please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Steitz?
Mr. Steitz? Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Next, well, next item will be here presentation regarding 2021 third quarter adopted budget.
All right.
All right. So we're going to continue this trend we've been doing for the last couple of years, just keeping you guys updated, diving a little bit more into the details and provide some context to some of the financial report that you get regularly in part of your packet. We'll start with general fund revenue for the first three quarters of the year. And again, we're focusing on the major revenue areas, so the ones defined as the ones that make over $100,000 consistently in general funds. So for property taxes, 2020 adopted revenue was 2.4 million. There was some consternation at the beginning of the summer if there were going to be any changes related to the payment schedule of that, related to the ongoing pandemic. That didn't come to bear. Because of that, we are performing pretty strongly in the property tax areas. We're at 101% of budgeted. Now, remember, we budgeted 97%. So what that means is we're actually collecting between 97 and 98% in property taxes, which is, you know, that's a good positive sign. So positive news on the property tax front. For city sales tax, 2020 adopted revenue was 1.5 million, and you can see the itemized city sales use and county sales and use tax amount on that slide. Right now, we are at 73% of what our budget is. Typically, we're at 75%. So that was to be anticipated. There was a hit to sales taxes earlier in the summer. Luckily, it was not as big, it was not pronounced, just the makeup of our commercial base wasn't as vulnerable to some of the COVID-19 fears. So that is good news. All areas are performing pretty well, stably. There's not been any unanticipated drop-off since the early one at the end of the spring. So we expect our mid-year projections that we presented at the time of the budget adoptions to largely bear out. That would bring us at 1.4 million at the end of the, at the end of the year, and the way things are trending, we look to be heading in that direction, which is good news because that's what our 2021 budget is based on. Franchise revenue, that one did take a hit, and again, it's one that we anticipated whenever we brought the 2021 budget for adoption. We budgeted at $545,000. We're thinking we're probably going to end up closer to that 508, between 508 to 512,000. Normally, we're at 75% of the year, makes sense, third quarter. Currently, we're at 68% of what the budget was, largely to, I mean, these, all these revenue items have got different variability wrapped up with COVID and things like that. So again, a hit that we anticipated and one that I think that we're on track to hit, the projected, the updated projected revenues that we presented in August.
Isn't the hit to that a lot due to the merger of companies?
I think we saw more of that last year, at the end of last year, and it began I think we saw more of that last year, at the end of last year and the beginning of this year than that is now. I would, I would think that some of that is due to non, non-payment of utilities. But again, we could dig deeper into that.
I think there is some of that, I mean, that's why you see for 2018, you had the merger.
Right.
As you recall then, they kind of clawed back some revenues, but it did adjust the pay, the rates, and of course, the rates are what the franchise is based on, so there was some rate lowering in some classes of customers, so some of it may be also related to the electric utility adjustments, which by and far is our largest franchise, you know, I put that in most of these electric franchises, largest revenue producer of franchises. There could be some of that.
Right. On to gaming revenue. This was probably the most volatile revenue, major revenue area that was hit. We adopted four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, which is pretty much in line with the one-and-a-half to the two, two-point-two percent growth that we saw every year in that, but we've been, we kept it pretty conservative, and even in some years where it exceeds that. That said, obviously, the closures that happened earlier in the spring had a big effect. We're currently at fifty-four percent of what that, of what we assumed when we originally adopted the budget last year. Normally, we're at seventy-four percent. The end-of-the-year budget estimate was two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars, and based on how things are going, we may overperform the updated estimate just a little bit, maybe fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, because it looks like, so when we map out, so we've kind of do a dynamic revenue adjustment as the year goes on, one month, how one month performs affects the next month and next month, and our recovery estimate for this, based on what we were hearing and just the different layoff news, was that we'd start to see some recovery in the gaming revenue around September. That actually looked like it happened a month early in August, so again, it's not going to be a huge difference, but it will, you know, it's, it's hopefully, like I said, between ten and twenty thousand dollars over what our end-of-year budget estimate was. So again, not great news out of there, one we anticipated, and one that, that I think that we accounted for in the 2021 budget appropriately. Court fines, court fines is right on, a right-on point. We're a little bit below the average, that's because 2018 and 2019 were so strong in that respect, but we are performing pretty much exactly where we normally are based on our year-end budget, which is good news. Ambulance fees, this is another one where we probably, if trends continue, I think we're going to overperform that a little bit. Our, our end-of-the-year estimate was a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, which is up from our original adopted amount of one-hundred-seventy-five thousand. We'll probably end up between one-ninety and two-hundred thousand is my guess by the end of the year. We're a little bit above, ahead of where we normally are at, at this point in the year, compared to how we end up, which again is good news. Below, this year right now, below the average, again, that's because 2017 and 2018 kind of bulked that up a little bit, but we're, WTC Mar, especially, has done a lot of work to kind of stabilize our, our revenue into that, which I think is bearing out. Motor vehicle taxes, again, not a whole lot of volatility in this one. Eighty-seven percent is our average from 2016 to 2019, where we're at this year, and that's exactly where we're at at this stage in 2020, so we expect this to perform essentially as budgeted. It's not a whole lot of volatility built into that. So kind of the overview for general fund revenues is that we've collected about eighty-two percent of the total budgeted revenue between January and September, and that does not include the CARES Act reimbursement into the general fund, which would be budgeted around a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, and depending on how these care projects shake out, that could go up and down a little bit, but by and large, all things considered, we're performing pretty well with the, considering the hits to the revenue items that we got earlier in the year, but thankfully, we're able to kind of anticipate and tailor the rest of the budget estimates accordingly. So again, revenues, I think we're going to perform pretty, you know, pretty well, all things considered. For moving on to kind of a higher look at the general fund expenses, so right now, we are at about seventy-four percent of where we had budgeted expenses at, when we adopted the general fund last year. Normally, at this point, we're at seventy-seven percent, that's because a lot of costs are front-loaded earlier in the year. That's why you're a little bit up higher than that seventy-five percent, what you would anticipate, but right now, we're a little bit less than that. There's some savings, and a couple of departments are doing different things to purpose savings. Obviously, we had some staffing that didn't get filled until later on in the year. For example, police department, usually seventy-six percent of their budget, at this point in the year, right now, they're at seventy-three percent. Public Works is usually at seventy-three percent of their budget at this point in the year. Right now, they're at fifty-seven percent of their budget. That's largely related to staffing. That's kind of the same story in parks and rec, because usually, they're at sixty-five percent of their budget at this point in the year. We've got more events-type activity that we spend in the last quarter, but right now, they're at forty percent of their budget, and that's largely related to the vacant staffing and the different models we've been doing in there. So kind of the guidance we got from the council was to, you know, during the uncertain periods, was let's tighten our belts a little bit, let's see where we can rein in, and, you know, maybe put off this project or that purchase here and there. Nothing major, but again, just kind of tighten our belts and kind of fill in the sting like everyone else was, and that is, at this point, put us at seventy-four percent of budgeted expenditure, which is down three percent from our average. And if there's any questions related to this, stop me and I'll answer the best I can.
One thing I was wondering is with the CARES Act, a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand and, and those staffing savings that we've had, how much of the gap does that close from the eighty-two percent? Like, does that put us a lot closer to on-budget for revenue, or do you know?
I would have to, with the hundred-and-sixty thousand, honestly, the eighty-two percent of revenue collected at this point is, is, is pretty strong. I mean, it's not, it's not, you know, out of this world bonkers, but normally, we're between that seventy-three and seventy-seven percent of revenues collected, so because we're at eighty-two, that means a lot of those kind of smaller items, our building permits, our rezoning applications, those kind of nickel and dime, those different areas to get, we're performing stronger on the overall. They're not major revenue items, and we're making a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on rezoning permits, but they kind of play at a point. I think, I mean, in building permit areas, you know, people just didn't have a whole lot to do over the summer, so they, they did their projects and, and.
Your time's up.
That's, that's all for me.
You've got to help tomatoes have a new start.
So to answer your question, that CARES Act funding and some of these other areas, they're going to make us an even stronger position. I think by and large, we're performing pretty strongly on the revenue area compared from, especially compared from where we budgeted. So we budgeted pretty conservatively at the end of 2019, and that's because, at the time of budget adoption, if you remember, sales taxes across the state were really depressed, and so we kind of assumed that trend was going to continue. It picked up in the last quarter, which kind of bolstered where our budget performance is at this point, and it kind of saved us, not that alone, but it really gave us some cushion to absorb some of the other revenue hits, and then again, some of these other smaller areas overperforming, puts us in a pretty good position as far as year-end.
Exactly. So it, it's a segue here for a second. So because of the care, the way CARES Act was initially done, and we put projects out there, we budgeted for those projects, kind of late in the system, we learned that effectively, all police and fire expenses were eligible. You don't have to qualify them, you just, they're all, well, if you look at our police and fire budgets, we have, you know, two-point-eight million or some, something in pay and salaries and et cetera that's under the CARES Act. So we may, before the end of the year, partially because of the timing, actually increase that number that will come to the general fund, and then post-end-of-year have discussions of, do we take those funds and use them for a general fund project? So there could be some changes as to how the year-end fund balance looks. It very well could be above estimates, but it's going to be made up by funds that are eligible to go into the general fund, but then collectively, as a policymaking body, you may say, but we still want to go do this project, we want to go do these things that may or may not be directly CARES Act associated. So expect to see some changes in that. I was going to bring that up in my report, but that's a good, a good time to kind of talk about that. So don't take that one-sixty-four as being the final number.
Right. That was, that was the original estimate, we kind of revised our project, but considering at this point, that's kind of ebb and flow, if we could kind of firm those up a little bit. Any other questions before I move on? All right, seeing none, so I'm going to quickly touch on all the other funds. Debt service fund, you can see where we're at at this point. The revenue side on the debt service fund, we're still, or in the, in the last quarter, we're going to be making those regular expensive transfers into the debt service, so those coming from special highway and from sewer, so that's essentially going to make up that difference between this number and this number. And then on the expenditure side, a lot of that was related to the, the bond funding that essentially never really hit our books, it was just kind of an in and out, so that's why the expenditures accounted for those costs that never really were, played a factor in our general ledger.
That was the refund, so remember, part of our bond issue was a refunding issue. We anticipated the dollars were going to hit our books and then go out to pay off those bonds. Instead, they went directly from bond sale, trustee, to the paying off the debt, so it just never hit our books. And that was about a million dollars, I think.
Yeah, eight-hundred, eight-hundred thousand. So special sales tax fund, this is the additional sales tax levy that's specifically for parks and rec, street and road improvements, and fire and EMS, mostly lease purchases in the fire and EMS portion. We kind of held off on some of the purchases for the, you know, the community center and some of the parks and rec program that we wanted to do at the beginning of the year, because we just didn't really know how the sales tax was going to shake out. So that accounts for some of the expenditures that have not been spent out of there. There's about, you know, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars of parks and rec expenditures that were not made at this point, because we were holding back, waiting to see how sales tax performed. The, we've also got a hundred thousand budgeted out of the, for street maintenance, as we kind of finish up some of these projects and look at different, the budget adjustments that might be needed, the budget amendments that we'll bring this, back to this group at the first meeting in December, that number will get firmed up. It was budgeted as a hundred thousand, we estimated it for end of the year at a hundred thousand, but it's going to probably change a little bit between now and then. And then revenues are kind of mostly tied to the performance of the sales tax that I already touched on. Special highway, not a whole lot in the quarter out there. That comes from the special highway fund and county highway fund. The final distribution hits in October, and I, I don't have those numbers, but I imagine when I do look at those, essentially, it's going to close that gap between, right, the one-forty-nine thousand and the one-ninety-eight thousand. Expenditures so far, this is kind of a small eleven-thousand-dollar figure, has been mostly related to snow and ice operations. This is the last year that we budgeted snow and ice out of this fund, and then moving forward, those are going to come out of the general fund. We do have some street maintenance budgeted at fifty thousand, capital outlay at twenty thousand, and then transfer to debt at a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. The hundred-and-twenty-five thousand is for sure, the capital outlay and the street maintenance, again, that's, as those street projects we got out there right now firm up, those are going to ebb and flow a little bit, but we expect them, we're not expecting any surprises out of, out of that fund. Economic development, that forty-eight thousand, I believe I've touched on that before, but that was received from Chicago Title in March, counted missing as revenue, as the remaining TIP revenue hit the economic development fund. We didn't really budget any revenue hitting the economic development fund this year, so that's what that number is, and the expenditures have largely been related to kind of our ecodevo memberships into, into the EDC and the planning and professional services that we pay for city planning. We've had other, you know, a sense of money parked in there for legal services and reviews and things like that, that to this point have not, we've just not had to use. Solid waste, touched on that a little bit earlier, so a quick note, typically, the city pays, we have twelve payments as part of our contracted service to Waste Management. The last four actually hit at the, in the last quarter, not the last three. We're billed twice in December for, at the, at that last rate, and that gets us to the twelve payments, so when you factor in all those payments, we're going to hit that expenditure level. Maybe a little bit smaller, because we didn't do the city wipe cleanup event, so there wasn't cost related to the rental and the ton charges for those units, but not really a whole lot of surprises coming out of the expenditure side. On the revenue side, I, I think we're going to hit right at that two-oh-four. There was a period there at the end of the summer where it looked like we were going to be, let me back up a little bit. It took, it took about this long for folks to get used to our new building model, and I say new, it's been around since 2018, but changing from a quarterly bill to a bi-monthly bill, it just took some time for whatever reason for people to get their sea legs about that. They kind of caught up and figured it out by the beginning of this year, but then there was some volatility related to COVID, and I think people were holding back, and they had their, it seemed like they were getting their stimulus money and then paying bills with that, and then when that ran out at the end of the summer, it looked like it was dipping down a little bit, but since then, it's ticked back up to the point where if we've got another month of, so bills are due every odd month, so if we get another month in November of revenue from there, similar to what we did in September, then I don't really have a lot of concern at the solid waste fund at this point. Kind of a similar story to sewer, a little bit of a depression at the end of the, or, excuse me, the middle of the, some, middle of the end of the summer, sticking back up, performing, other than that, we performed pretty strongly. I think we're going to hit that revenue item pretty easily. On the expenditure side, there's a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand that needs to be transferred to debt that will hit in the fourth quarter, and we have the other kind of major areas that are going to be spent, so we're not really needed to perform, thankfully, any major repairs in the service contract area, which is budgeted sixty thousand. I think we're at seven thousand dollars spent in that line item at this point, so that's, that's good news. I may have jinxed it, but I did say.
Oh, you don't know about that pump repair you had.
Well, yeah, pay no attention to that part, we'll strike it from the record, but.
Yes.
No big surprise coming out of there. Again, performed pretty well, we've kept a close eye on it, and it's, it's not really surprising to this point of the year. And that's kind of the, the broad overview. Really, the, the short version of this is, we're doing pretty good, all things considered. We budgeted really conservatively at the end of 2019 for 2020, and then we kind of did really well the first quarter, and then things got weird with COVID in the middle, but just the way when they're made up, we're, it doesn't, we're not as vulnerable to some of those outside factors, which is, between our strong performance in the first quarter, us keeping a really close leash, or tight leash on these revenue items, I think we're going to be set up pretty well for the end of the year and not have a lot of the effects that some of these other communities are feeling due to the pandemic. And that's all I've got for this item, and I will entertain questions.
Mr. Steitz, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Colonel, if you don't, thank you, Zach. Appreciate your.
You know, Mayor, before we move, I, I would like to say Zach does Zach and Sean together, but especially Zach kind of getting all this together. Now, there's just a lot of data there, and trying to get that data into a format that relatively brief, that's usable, that, you know, we always kind of, you know, the general public can look at that and understand, and I think, you know, we've been doing that for many years. Zach has kind of taken that role from me of, of doing the presentations, just doing a great job, and Sean trying to keep the nickels and the pennies and the dimes all in order can be more challenging than, than we think some things, so I just want to say thank you both for the, for the hard work.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, advisory report, you're on, Mike.
Well, just a couple of quick things. I know that I communicated with you all about the entry sign. I, I don't have much update. I don't know what the solution is. Again, the spot we were looking at on the corner, found out it's actually in K-Dot right-of-way, and then trying to go through the K-Dot process for signs is rather lengthy, and now they wouldn't allow LED signs in the right-of-way. Talked about potentially trying to get them to abandon that portion of the right-of-way, but that is a long and lengthy process, and then looking at, you know, maybe potentially other options, maybe even acquiring a small piece, but that corner is just, it's the perfect corner to put it. It's the most difficult corner to put it, so I haven't given up on it, and, and so just kind of give you an update. That's, we're just, we're trying to, you know, we can't do much with the sign company without having a signed site. I mean, you know, the, the general look of the sign would be the same. How big the V is, or if it's an L, or whatever, kind of depends on the site, and so do have one that we're, we're working on, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get to that.
If we can't find a suitable site.
Right.
Can we invest the money in really nice portables?
Yeah, so we can still get portables, right, and so, you know, the, the two portable, the two portable signs was, are roughly the cost of a permanent sign. So that is still possibly those are, we should be able to do fairly quickly, I mean, in, in the sense of getting those. the sense of getting those, uh, you know, those are, those signs are color graphic portable signs, so they still look like what you might see on the highway, but, but they have color, you could still, you know, you still work them from a computer, uh, they typically have other information in there, like you, you can add speed information, right? I mean, the problem is putting them places isn't, sometimes it's hard to find the place and, but they can do traffic counts and speed information for you, uh, you know, they're not going to take pictures, but, you know, I mean, they could tell you here's the average speed, and here's the average, you know, vehicle count, some stuff that would be valuable, uh, you know, at certain locations. So that's, that's still, that was our original plan, so dollar wise, we still have that allocated into, we probably by the next meeting, we're going to need to make a decision, if we want to do that, or somehow, you know, set aside dollars or get other dollars, so, but I just, I was, I was disappointed when we couldn't put it there, and we thought about moving it a little bit farther north to get out of the right of way, but then you get it too far to the north, you'll see it well going one direction, but you won't see it at all going the other direction, so it's just, it's a bit of a challenge, so, but we're still working on it. Uh, Wednesday is Veterans Day, uh, city halls will be closed, the city survey, the Dallas Police and Fire will be here, but will be closed in honor of our veterans, uh, so that will, you will not be here on Wednesday, so remember Veterans Day and, and allow to recognize them as you can. Uh, we have funding, I, I talked about this, and I'll try not to use too much acronym, but we have what's called TAP funding available, which is alternative transportation, which is the money we apply for to build, uh, a sidewalk link from basically here to the park, uh, and, and so you, people could walk from here to the park without being in the street. We had, uh, the first meeting of that today, uh, Dusty is on that committee, uh, he's kind of getting his sea legs on this process, um, you know, it, we're, we're at the line, it looks like we'll get funding of some eleven, it's kind of how much funding will we get, so we're probably between fifty to eighty percent of what we asked for, you know, if we get less than, you know, some point you get to where all the federal hoops you have to go through make it questionable as to whether it's working, but, you know, if we can get that seventy-five to eighty percent, it definitely makes sense to do the project. And we set it up in such a way as we could scale down our funding scale, you know, I mean, we got full funding, which never happens, we'd do it all, but some of it, like some of the on-street bike lane markings or signage, you know, we could shorten or adjust those things. The number one key to that product, project is from basically here, uh, all the way to the park, so it'd be on the north side of Blake Street all the way through, the crosswalks, you know, that, that, that's the number one priority of that project, get people that are walking out of the street, that priority number one. So we'll keep working on that.
When will that go to TTTC?
Probably, I'm going to assume probably December, maybe January, because we still have another meeting in November, so I don't know how far out it is, so the next meeting, they should make their final recommendation. That committee has both Missouri and Kansas people, so the money's segmented, but the voting is there, and to be quite honest, uh, we don't have, we don't, we don't have a lot of representation on that particular committee, like, I mean, Kansas, so, uh, I mean, Dusty's on there, Mike McDonald out of Leavenworth County, um, one representative from the UG, and I don't remember how big the committee is, but twenty or something like that.
Johnson County?
There's some Johnson County people, too, but, you know, when it gets down to it, everybody's, oh, my, my project is the most important project, so once I get mine funded, then I'll be happy to talk to you about yours, uh, and, and they did some different scoring this year that, that, so now they're trying to decide how they're using their scores. Fairly typical, uh, I, you know, I think we have a, a reasonable chance of funding to do that project, that would be a good project. The other project is the Ninety-Eighth Street project from Kansas Avenue to the North City Limits, that comes under what's called STP or Surface Transportation Program, uh, we just got scores back on that. We are at about the average median score overall, it's just a matter of how much, there's eighty-two million dollars in projects and twenty-four and a half million dollars in funds, so, right, that, that's, which is about normal, three to one, four to one is about where it's at, uh, you know, we, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a line project or highly line project, it's a good thing, um, you know, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep pushing on that one, we probably won't hear on that one for a while either, uh, but there's a number of projects in this cycle where they've never received any federal funding, and so kind of the, how the committee looks at that to say, you know, the equity of, of funding, if, you know, these cities have never gotten funding, should they get funding versus, you know, here's a, I mean, some projects just, you know, a Met Cap Avenue and you're looking at traffic, you know, and you're looking at just traffic counts and stuff that rises to the top, right, and so, uh, it's always a challenge, but it's, it's that time of the year when we go do it, so just a quick update on those two projects. Other than that, Mayor, I don't have anything to add.
Would you like to see if Mr. Steins has any comments now first, or you want to wait? No, we'll just wait until the end.
Okay, all right.
Zach?
Last thing there for me tonight, uh, I did want to highlight, we did the Neighborhood Haunt event, uh, on Halloween and the Friday before Halloween, and kind of the reviews are in, this was, I cannot overstate how well this was received by people who participated, both the resident side and then our staff side on both the police and the fire and our park and rec services, so just up here, these are a couple of the comments I pulled from, uh, from the Facebook, "You guys are awesome, wonderful idea, thanks for doing this, my kids loved it." Um, you know, for a while, Park and Rec Supervisor and I have been kind of looking at the concept of the idea of maybe moving away from the truck or treat because it's, you know, a lot of area, a lot of different, a lot of cities do it and they all kind of pile on top of each other at the end of October. Uh, with this, you know, we'll probably be in a position to tweak this, add elements of truck or treat, incorporate the trail in it more and more, but, you know, by and large, the Neighborhood Haunt event was, I would count it as extremely successful, if, if Chief Winn was here, he would attest, his guys had a ton of fun, I, I know that the officers that participated had a lot of fun, um, again, I just, we got some pictures from it, uh, just, it, by all accounts, this event was, uh, very well received by the public and the staff who were able to participate in it. Um, I just want to thank police and fire and our park staff again for kind of putting it all together. This is what the, uh, uh, families received, kind of a personalized bag with the logo, and it's got the, all the candy in there, and then the Make a Monster craft, it's again all personalized with our information on there, so they know that it's a city event, putting it on, and bringing it to them. Um, administrative staff coming in to kind of stuff all these bags, get everything ready, it was really a team effort from all the departments, and we pulled up, we were able to pull it off, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't, there were some tweaks and some, uh, uh, changes that we'll need to do, even if we just replicate it exactly next year, but for an event coming together like that in about two and a half weeks, the, and the notice that we had to get it out, people found out about it, and people were excited about it, the people who didn't know about it, but saw the commotion, came out of it, came out and saw it, and everybody had fun with it. So again, big thanks to the public safety and the park staff that helped pull this together, um, I'm just really pleased with how this event came off. The end of this week, we've got the, um, bulk item pickup on Saturday the fourteenth, also on Saturday the fourteenth, uh, Councilor Kaye Howard probably have more to say about this, we've got a mobile food pantry going on at the community center that we're going to, we're not, the city's not necessarily the, the, uh, uh, organization putting it on, but we're going to help with the logistics of the venue, um, so again, we've got more fall activities, maybe have some more information. Because this event went so well, especially the Saturday event, which is kind of a, a, they called it the spooky express, where it wasn't, you had to sign up, but they just hit the neighborhoods, that was used as kind of a trial run for, uh, the possibility of a holiday parade, so all, as we, those details come firm up, uh, we'll keep you all updated, and obviously we'll keep the public updated, but keep Saturday, December nineteenth on your, on your calendar, uh, kind of circled, and that's, that's where we're, we're kind of looking at, again, keep everybody updated as those details come together, but that's all I've got, again, really great event, all of our staff came together to pull it off, and I really appreciate everyone's efforts.
We also, we have the pickup, uh, electronic pickups going this week, too.
Yes, that's right, we got the e-waste boxes.
And they're already stuffed out there, so...
They're tarped right now because we've got rain coming in and we don't want the cardboard to get soaked, but normally they're going to be open and their, people are just, we got four out right now, as they get filled, we'll take them and we'll put out empty ones, so hopefully people take advantage of that.
Thank you, Zach, appreciate all your work. Okay, um, Chief, please.
Uh, just again, congratulations to those on the life-saving efforts, as I mentioned, uh, Master Patrol Officer Michael Hart, that's his second one in a year or more, over a year, but, uh, great job, and, and this time of year, once again, it's, that's somewhat self-sacrificial, it's pretty intimate, getting CPR and you're just running in there and not thinking about all the other things that are going on in the world, so, uh, I think this time was certainly extraordinary, plus the life-saving in itself, so great job to them, once again, the police and fire. Uh, very busy, we have a number of cares projects, IT-related, uh, we have a JAG grant that has some IT components as well, so we're, my office specifically is pretty busy in that, but I'll, but again, I think it sends our, kind of that, that beginning of May, we just saw a spike in our activities, so just overall, uh, we're still trending, uh, trending, uh, not in our highest year, but had we had the full year and it been as it was, it would have been a pretty extraordinary year, once again, so we've, uh, we've solved a number of felonies that involved vehicle thefts, uh, we had a shooting case, uh, that we're wrapping up, and we think we all have everything we need there, uh, you know, so just really active in our detective division, and the patrol guys have been out there, uh, doing everything they can, our K-9 staying active, and then, and as I mentioned before, we have a number of drug cases that have nothing to do with K-9, so it's kind of interesting that, uh, how we're working and, and getting out there and taking care of business, at the same time trying to stay safe. We had our, in, in quite several weeks, had our first kind of COVID scare, turned out to be negative, which is good, that's a good thing, because we, we do interact with a lot of people all day long, including ourselves in our confined areas, so, and then on our CARES Act, our building remodels are priority on, on that particular, uh, Mr. Webb has coordinated getting some of the contracts signed and getting someone started, we have some glass that needs to be ordered and things, but we haven't seen any wrenches turning over there, hammers hammering, but we will fairly soon, and we have a plan to modify our, our, our procedures and policies on how we deal with stuff internally inside the building when that starts to happen, so, uh, I think a lot of creative savings in that area, Mike Webb was really instrumental in saying, we could use these folks to do this and save money here and save money, so I think we've got a real manageable budget, so that's, that's, I thought it was a great effort, so. Looking forward to it, actually, we need to have some change over there, just for the flow of the building and the security of everybody, so.
And your chief. Deputy Chief, uh, Marlowe, have you got anything to add?
No, I think you've heard me talking up, Mayor.
Okay.
Our, uh, UV sterilizer arrived late last week, we're training with it, we'll develop policy, and we'll begin using it in the public areas when, when it's appropriated.
Do you have a guest later tonight?
My, my wife's here.
Yes.
My wife's here, man.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Dusty, have you got anything?
Uh, just, guys have been working hard out there on the roads, and I got to commend them as well, so, thank you. Nothing else?
Thanks, David. Please see you at the end.
Have you?
Chuck, I'm going to start with you.
Okay. Is the utility work on thirty-two, is that part of that Google project?
No, I think it's, uh, well, it's not part of the, the, the project we're engaged in UPN, uh, it's a private, and I'm not, I think it's AT&amp;T that's doing that, uh, particular connection. I think they're going, I think they've got some customers down in the Plaza West area that they're coming in, if I remember right, uh, where they may just be making a connection in there, so, but it's not part of our, of that UPN project, so.
And, um, well, that project becoming the Ninety-Eighth Street, what, from Casey King?
Yeah, so, so the, the partnership, as we've talked about, would be, you know, basically the three cities and the folks, so, so we, we looked at a couple of different paths, uh, and just felt that Ninety-Eighth Street was, had the least impact in a way, some of that can be on poles, some of that can be underground, but, uh, so they're going to come and then continue down Ninety-Eighth Street to Woodin, and that was one of the adjustments we suggested, because then it opens that fiber up for future use by, for development purposes, right, and then go down Woodin, just past our lift station, so we could tie that lift station into a fiber network and help us, you know, manage it if we ever get to that level, but also, uh, can be connected with the UG systems and everybody else's, and you could see sewer plugs real time, and then come back up, uh, Ninth Street to Blake Street, and then enter the city hall, and then we go back up Fourth Street, connect to K thirty-two, and there'd be a connection basically over to K seven Bonner Springs, and a, a V going up to the school, so all the schools would be connected, uh, in that process, so all the schools will be connected, uh, basically all the public safety facilities, you know, in, in Bonner, never still, will be connected, will be connected up with the nine-one-one and the, the dispatch system. Uh, still working through some of the details, and one of the things they're trying to work on with the state is to say, how do you expect us to spend, you know, roughly two-point-eight million dollars in forty-five days, it's just, it's not feasibly possible to do this, and so I think they're trying to get a, a waiver to say, hey, if we sign the contracts and have everything in place, and we're under construction, will you give us, you know, some additional time? That was the last feedback I got from, uh, Duke UG that arranged, Alan House, which is one of the assistant city managers, but he kind of came from a, I think he worked for IBM actually before he went to work for the UG, or, and his wife worked for IBM, so he kind of, that's how it was, and that was the person.
The, um, utility poles within the River View project?
Yes.
What, did we put the utility underground, or did they move the poles back away?
They'll be moved back, so they're still, they're still overhead utility, but they'll be upgraded from single-phase to three-phase power, uh, going to the south and back to the east, so they get relocated, but they're also going to have three-phase powers, and they need a little more width on, on the arms, because they have four wires instead of three, or whatever, so. Now, it will go underground at the intersections, you know, and so it goes under from that point going north and, and all of the, pretty much all the other utility, like the, the, like the AT&amp;T is on one side, or Spectrum or somebody else, or MCI, or, I can't keep up with all the, the names, and one of them's going underground, one of them's going to stay on poles, and then go underground, obviously the gas is underground, the water, uh, and we've made, one of the things we're going to look at is maybe putting dark conduit in, over there, so in other words, put conduit in the ground, so two-inch conduit, you know, two, two-inch conduits, or I think that's the right size, in the handheld boxes, and then in the future, if we want to bring fiber through that area, conduits early in the ground, and just pull the fiber cables through the boxes, and we can hold the conduit to pull through, so. We're getting what that cost is, you know, is it a big cost, or is it, you know, is it a twenty-five thousand dollar cost, or a two-point-five million dollar cost, and I just don't want the answer to that. But something we probably ought to think about is if we do graves in the future, because that is becoming the utility, you know, that's one of the big utilities now, is being able to put fiber, you know, in conduit in the ground, and so...
And we want to be able to control access to it.
Right. So let you manage it better, or manage your own right of way, that's the thing.
Thank you. So, Margaret?
You're going to go? Ooh, where do I start? I have a few things written down, so I guess I will, um, start with my first one, so my question for our trash change, and is Casey Disposal going to send out kind of instructions on that, or is the city going to send that out?
So Casey Disposal has drawn up some of those kind of like door hangers and insert type things, so they'll be kind of heading up the notification process, so really outside of the contract piece of it, what's next is scheduling the, so once we get nailed down exactly how many containers they're going to be needing, once we finish up our conversations with the mobile home park, they've already started ordering the base amount for the current service level, um, they'll do that switch, uh, probably on the first pickup day, or the week before the first pickup day in January, and then on the last pickup day of the year, Waste Management will come and pick up their items.
Is there a billing cycle coming out before then?
Uh, we'll have a billing cycle that's coming out now, and then as part of all of that switch over and change, there will be a bill, if we don't have a billing cycle come out, then, then, I think it actually comes out a little bit afterwards, we can do a special... little bit afterwards, we can do the special mailing and put some, all of those details and make sure everybody's kind of up on what needs to be done. But they, KC Disposal's been developing materials.
Hopefully it's a good transition, but I'm sure there'll be some.
Typically what happens, I mean, I've, I've been through a couple of these, and they're never perfect, I'll just say that right now. So it kind of depends on pickup days, but if I understand, we're, we're Thursday now?
We're Tuesdays?
Tuesdays, and we're gonna go to Monday?
No, we're gonna stay on Tuesday, everything.
Oh, change.
Alright, so, so probably, so that actually works well, so Waste Management will come through, they will empty their containers, they will have another truck following them or nearby that will pick those containers up.
Gotcha.
And then KC Disposal will come along and set their containers. So hopefully my people are at, at work, assuming they made sure to put their containers out, their containers will go out and they'll come home, and they'll have new containers with different colors on them, and, and otherwise they won't know it. Where it gets to be a challenge sometimes is where your pickup days change. And then what you have to basically do, and I was gonna ask that, too, then you end up sometimes, you don't want that cycle to go too long, so you shorten the cycle up, so maybe you only have three or four days. So you end up with five pickups in a month, and there's a little cost to that, but generally my, but keeping on the same day, that is how it should work. One, you know, they're, all the containers are gonna change out on the same day, but pick up and then follow them the next week with the new pickup truck.
Okay, not that, that's amazing.
That's, that's the hope. It's made, the hardest part is, is getting people to, who may not put their trash or recycling out every week, to make sure to put their containers out, even if they don't have anything in them, so.
That's why I wondered where the instruction was.
So for all of you, as we get that together, please help get the word out, because, I mean, I, I just, that will happen, and for a bit, that's, you know, sometimes the, the company leaving will just say, screw it, we don't care, you know? If they didn't put them out, let them deal with it. Other companies are, if you don't put it out, we're gonna give you one more notice, and we're gonna send you a bill for two-hundred dollars for our containers, right? Because it is their property, and, and the containers are their property, so. Let's hope we don't get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm all nature.
And Zach and Sean, thank you again for the quarterly budget updates, those are tremendous. It saves a lot of shock sometimes, or, you know, things like that. Am I dreaming? Is there gonna possibly be a second CARES reimbursement?
There's not a second CARES reimbursement, so the original more.
Is there more money coming?
The four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollar is CARES Act one, and we've gotten that money.
Right.
So that money's come, it's how we spend it, and we do have to get a report before the end of year, that we've spent it either on projects, or we've spent it to reimburse us for, for public safety expenses. The second CARES Act is the one where the UG, in partnership with this company called UPN, they're a, they're a private company, submitted a grant for about three-and-a-half million dollars to extend fiber to basically Edwardsville and Bottom Springs and connect it back up with.
And that's all it's gonna go to?
That's a, it's managed under them, our part will be as a partner in that and to give some financial support to that, is kind of the, the general plan. And we could use some of our CARES Act dollars to pay for that, if that's, we have a couple of those, so we're not getting any additional CARES dollars in the process.
Right, right. Um, Zach, again, kudos to you, because I think you made it all happen. I know there's a lot of people that make things happen, especially the police and fire departments, because delivering that candy was even extra special for Halloween, but, and the whole army here helping everybody, I think, and I'm glad you showed the comments and the pictures, because I think it was just very well-received, and couldn't have just done it better. And I'm glad all the kids, I'm glad you decided just to go around all the kids, too. Because once again, you know, maybe some people didn't know about it, it's crazy how some people maybe don't know, that's where our signs come in. So, anyway, thank you again for that. And last but not least, our Fire and Police Department, congratulations, the selfless acts that they perform every day, but to be part of that Make a Difference Award, just extraordinary, so proud of them, so proud, and I'm proud that the representative from Providence came to do that, too, as well, so. Great job, kudos to you all, thank you.
Carolyn?
Well, maybe repeating. Zach and Sean, thank you for your work on the budget. I know there are a lot of people involved in the Halloween events, since there was more than one, the community response, it was just fantastic. Especially, I mean, there were a lot of people here at City Hall, I know Heather spent a lot of time packing bags, there's a lot of prep, but the kids get so excited seeing the police and fire trucks and these, you know, guys pull up, and it, it just made a big, a big impact in the community, and so thank you for all the work that was put in for that. Let's see, Harvesters, is this, the event, is this coming Saturday? It's a little bit different than some of the typical Harvesters events, we are asking people to pre-register for that, if they're signing up to receive groceries, and that deadline is Wednesday, because I need to turn in my numbers Thursday to Harvesters to make sure we have enough food for everybody who's showing up. I, my heart is not to turn anybody away, and so the goal is to be as prepared as possible. If anybody wants to help out with that, just let me know, I won't turn away any helping hands. So let me know as soon as possible, and that way I'm sure to know whether I need to beg more people for help, and then.
What's the time target?
Time for that is, so the, the truck will be dropping off the items, so it's my truck coming in to drop off items between eight-thirty and nine-thirty, starting us volunteers to get here on late fifteen, and we hope to be wrapped up by noon. With, with grace, because it's, it's becoming a much bigger event than I even imagined, so that shows us that there's a greater need than we even knew. We are approaching, before I came here tonight, about a hundred and twenty families that have signed up to receive groceries in the area, so. And, and I'm asking them in that, you know, where, where are you coming from? We're not limiting it to Edwardsville, but the great majority of families should be coming from our own community, so. Yeah, that, that's, that's a big deal that's coming up. And then lastly, just again, thank you for the folks who are putting their lives on the line every day, for the members of our community, the police and fire. I mean, that was by the statement and the ceremony earlier, but we know that you guys would do that every single day, and so taking time to appreciate our officers and our fire and our paramedics is, is something that should be a regular event here, so thank you again.
Thank you. Carrie?
Coming full circle, and go last, everybody's already talked, but I would like to say that I've seen an awful lot of changes in Edwardsville on first responder situations, police, fire, EMT, and so forth, and it's just really a testament to the professionalism of the people that we have in Edwardsville. And I, I think the whole town is proud of you, and, you know, whenever you hear complaints, it's from the people that probably are gonna be arrested or something. And you guys are absolutely phenomenal, and I think for the town and the size of Edwardsville, it's just wonderful that you guys are all here, and that you care so much about all this. Another testament to the management on the budget, the control of the budget, and how well the budget is doing, considering what we've been through this year, which in all of our lifetimes, I don't think any of us have ever been through anything like this or suspected that we would ever go through anything like this. And for all of the staff and personnel to keep us above board, keep all the employees, and the, the way it's been handled, I think is just absolutely great, that you guys are that good for the city of Edwardsville, and it does not go unappreciated, I do want you to know that. The, I was gonna ask one thing, besides all of the congratulations, how's the study doing on the city center project? Is there any news?
I, I don't really have anything to update, I know that Novogradis was, you know, they've executed the agreement, ALCO being the developer, Novogradis being the, the state, and they've been gathering information, but I haven't seen a report, but I would expect probably the draft report will be fairly quickly. Those generally take thirty days or so to, you know, to get them processed, because a lot of it's data-driven, but, you know, some of it is they've got to understand this place, and so I know they've been gathering information. I, I would expect possibly by our next meeting, we have, if nothing else, a preliminary report, if not a final on the one phase. There's two, there's kind of two studies going on, there's the, the multifamily component, and then the broader, kind of housing discussion study, and the housing, the bigger housing study is being done independent from Novogradis, just for personally for scope and, and pricing, so.
Well, one thing that I think, you know, it's, the way my mind works is that the way the budget's been controlled and kept track of, it seems to me like there's not gonna be that much of a problem with continuing on with that city project. You know, I think that we've got pretty good confidence in all of you to be able to work that thing out for us, so I appreciate you efforts on that. And I guess that's all I have, thank you guys very much.
Has Councilman Steitz, has he had any comments?
Mr. Steitz, do you have any comments for the group? Are you still with us, Mr. Steitz?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Any comments you would like to share? I've got the volume up as high as I can, but I'll repeat it if not, so.
Nothing at all, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, well, get, I, I know everybody sends our wishes to you to feel better.
Thank you, bye, thank you.
I just love echoing comments, but it really makes me gratified to know the, the level of competency of our public safety, both police and fire, and especially with, with Zach and Public Works, and, and all the staff that has participated in, in these events that we just completed this last week, I really do appreciate it immensely. And with that, your turn.